Hi Neil.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm good, thanks. Neil, just to give you the heads up, we just want to test especially the live streaming to YouTube. So others have been uncomfortable testing while the video was on. So I don't know if you want to switch off your video or leave it on.
Okay, I'll turn it off.
Yeah, we just want to test the sound. So we'll be rumbling for a few minutes, not saying much. So just give me 30 seconds to go onto the stream now.
Sure.
Neil?
Yep.
Yep. Just to get the sense, the people that will be joining you, will they be in the same room or different locations?
They're in different locations.
Oh, class, no, I think.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think it's, it works better even from our side that way. All right, Neil. I don't know if you want to say a few more words so that we can test the stream and not waste any of your time.
Sure. So yesterday I was saying testing, testing, one, two, three. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, I might ask you to repeat that maybe two, three more times.
Testing, one, two, three. And testing, one, two, three.
All right, I think we're good to go, Neil. The panel will be with us in a few more minutes. So we'll, we'll, we'll leave you in the lobby for now, right?
That's good. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Neil. Bye.
Thank you.
Public hearings into the online platforms market inquiry. This evening, as I'm sure you can see, we have Google, who'd be talking about search and then travel and shopping verticals as well. So Agnieszka, if you want to briefly introduce your team and then we can proceed with the presentation. If I can ask, just, there's a lot tonight. If we can keep the presentation to maximum 45 minutes and then in our question and answer, if we can just try to keep the answers to the point and short, if that would help. So over to you, Agnieszka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Good afternoon. It's great to see you again and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Agnieszka Molda and I'm Competition Legal Specialist at Google. Today, we have arranged for a number of Google product experts and team members covering South African operations in order to assist the inquiry and address issues which the Commission has asked us to address. And if we can answer some of your questions immediately, for example, if we don't have the right team members, we will happily follow up with you, as already discussed yesterday. Same applies for confidential information if we are unable to discuss in the public forum. Google speakers, we have with us today are Charles Murito, Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy Team for Sub-Saharan Africa; Abongile Machele, Senior Manager of the Government Affairs and Public Policy Team for South Africa; Alister McQuenna, Country Director of South Africa; David Price, Legal Director for Search; Dan Kane, Senior Product Counsel for Search; Adam Kreider, Associate Product Counsel for Shopping; and Abby Pringle, Product Counsel for Travel. As of yesterday, we are joined also by Slodder May and Baskin and RBB Economics. As part of the purpose of the public hearing is to provide information and explanations to the public, our presentation will offer some, some of that about how our services operate and address topics the Commission has raised. We hope that the Commission finds our presentation informative and we're happy to answer any questions afterwards. So with that short introduction, I'll pass, hand over to my colleague Dan to start the presentation. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Okay.
We can hear you now.
Perfect. Good afternoon, good evening to the panel. As Agnieszka mentioned, my name is Dan Kane and I'm Senior Counsel at Google. I'm here today to speak with you about Google Search. So to briefly give some background and context, Google Search is a platform that enables users to search for information on the web. Here in the United States, that's like google.com. In South Africa, it's at google.co.ca. The search experience has evolved over the years, as we'll discuss in a bit, but fundamentally consists of two main elements. First, organic unpaid results that are ranked algorithmically according to search principles. And second, paid advertisements that are ranked separately by the Ads Auction. Our organic search results are ranked based on what we think will be most useful and relevant to the user based on their search query. Our algorithm will consider a number of different elements when making this assessment. Though at a high level, these can be boiled down to the following bullet points: user intent, relevance, usefulness and usability of the indexed webpages, and, when available, context from the user's activity down Google, such as their location or their prior search history. Importantly, these results are not based on any commercial, commercial relationship that we may have with third parties that advertise on Google. So as you can see from the, from this slide, the search engine results page may show both search ads and organic search results. On a desktop computer, we may show ads in the center top, at the bottom, and on the right-hand side of the spade of the page. This is what we consider to be the ad space. Now, just because we may show ads in these spaces doesn't mean that we always will. For example, over the last four years, approximately 80% of searches on Google haven't had any ads in the top slot on the search results page. When we show ads, we do so because we believe that they are both relevant to the user's query and useful to the user's journey. Advertisers understand the interest of their customers and as a result, they are able to customize their ad experiences. For example, by suggesting specific pictures to be used in the ad or site links to be included that they know will be relevant to a person with buying intent. Now, it's important to note that we limit the amount of vertical space that can be monetized. This means that the search results page will always have space available for organic results to appear. And at Google, we also clearly distinguish between ads and organic results, which we'll discuss more in more detail later in the presentation. Now, I want to take a second to talk about the importance of separating organic search and paid advertising. We take this very, very seriously. The fact that a third party advertises on Google does not influence their ranking in organic search. And to ensure that all teams within the company, as well as our advertising partners outside of it, understand this, we've enshrined the honest results policy that you see on this slide. Again, I can't overemphasize how important this is to us. We want users to understand when content on Google is an organic result and when it is an ad. That's why on the search results page, you'll see blue links without a label. These are organic results. All ads and sponsored links will be labeled as such. How we label ads has evolved over time. At first, the search results page had a block approach to ads labeling, with the entire block being background shaded. Now, we've taken more of a badge approach, where each ad is clearly labeled as an ad or sponsored. And we think that the badge approach makes it even easier for users to understand when a result is a paid result and when it is, when it is organic. Now, anyone who's been using Google over the last 20 years knows the search results page has changed over time. Like other search engines, we began by showing plain blue links that led to pages on the web. We also showed plain text ads. Our results then, as they are now, were generated by crawling webpages, creating an index of those sites, and ranking them based on information that we understood about them. As users' expectations for search has evolved, we've made changes to the search engine results page to match those needs. In the 2000s, we realized that some search queries were looking for more narrowly targeted information in specific areas and that generic results in text ads not provide the best results for our users. So we, along with others in the industry, made investments to provide more relevant search and search advertising products. In organic search, we develop specialized search results for certain information categories, such as consumer goods, hotels, and flights. My colleagues Adam and Abby will discuss these features, as well as changes that we've made to our ads products later in the presentation. The evolution of the search results page is due to the continuous work and fine tuning that we make to the algorithms that power Google Search. Even after 20-plus years of operations, we still make thousands of algorithmic changes every year. In 2019, for example, we made more than 3,500 updates a search. The overall size and impact of each of these algorithmic updates varies, but the ultimate purpose is always the same: to improve the quality and usefulness of search for our users. The practical effect of these changes is that websites may see their position move up or down on the search results page. If a website's quality score decreases, for example, it may move down on the page if the update focused on quality. As noted already, we do not consider our commercial partnerships when making these algorithmic changes. And whether a third party is an advertiser or on Google does not influence how they rank on the search results page. Importantly, we're transparent about these changes. The Google Search Central blog contains thousands of posts on the operation of our algorithms. Now, given the sheer number of algorithmic changes we make each year, it'd be impractical to announce all of them. But the Google blog will include an announcement for all of the major changes. Now, deciding what results to show which user is not a simple task. Often, our algorithm has to assess thousands or even millions of relevant webpages, images, and videos to identify the most useful material. Our algorithms then need to compare different types of results. For example, text webpage versus image versus travel unit, and decide what result will be most relevant and useful to the user's query. We understand that our users come to Google because they expect to find the most relevant information and response to their queries. And to satisfy that expectation we have, we will continue to, invest heavily to address these ranking challenges to ensure that our results continue to meet our users' needs. With that said, I will now hand it over to Adam Kreider, who will provide some more information about our search advertising products, as well as our shopping products.
Thank you, Dan. As Agnieszka mentioned, I'm a Product Counsel on the search ads team and primarily cover shopping. I'm going to speak about the search ads auction, our shopping product, this morning. As a starting point, it's important to understand the vast majority of searches do not return any ads at all. And as Dan mentioned earlier, on average, 80% of queries return no ads at the top of the page. This is because either the query is not targeted by advertisers because they did not bid on the keywords related to the query, or the ads targeted at the query are not sufficiently relevant to the query to meet our quality thresholds and therefore we don't display them. Moreover, our systems are not designed to show an ad if there are no relevant ads for the search query. For example, on a non-commercial query like South Africa local government election. Nor will we display irrelevant advertisements even if advertisers bid on keywords. That said, Google Ads are a useful way for advertisers, including small and medium-sized enterprises, to promote their business to consumers by buying ad space. This is especially the case for SMEs who don't necessarily have the resources to pay for more traditional mass advertising like billboards. In parallel to the developments in organic search that Dan explained, we developed specialized ad formats to help advertisers promote their product offers in a way that surfaced more useful information to users, thereby enhancing the user's search experience and making the platform more effective for our advertisers. First, in 2008, we introduced a design for richer text ads for merchant product offers. This allowed users to expand the text ad to see individual offers from a particular merchant with pictures and prices. Later, we developed product ads. These are specifically tailored to promoting product offers directly within the ad, giving advertisers an alternative to text ads, which allowed for display of pictures and prices directly on the search results page without requiring the user to expand the ad. As mentioned, most queries show no ads. But for illustration, here's an example on this slide of a search results page today in response to a query for running shoes that generated a number of ads. Currently, we show a maximum of eight text ads on a search results page. Up to four text ads can appear above organic search results and up to four can appear at the bottom of the page on any search query. You can see that this query has only generated two text ads at the top and one text ad at the bottom of the page. Specialty ad experiences like shopping ads can appear at the top of the page as a carousel or in a right-hand side grid on desktop or as a carousel on top of mobile devices. There is a maximum amount of space in the page reserved for showing ads. In other words, the space available for organic results is not impacted by the number of ads that show. The Commission has asked us about ad impressions showing on search results pages two through five. We provide highly relevant results, which generally appear on the first result, the first, excuse me, the first page of the search results. And this relevance has improved over time. If a high proportion of users remain on the first search results page, this is a signal of the quality and usefulness of our search results for our users. When a search does return ads, Google Ads determines the order in which search ads appear by, excuse me, search ads appear by calculating each ad's ad rank. We calculate ad rank for each search ad request. Ad rank does not depend on bid alone. Rather, ad rank takes into account an advertiser's bid and the ad quality, how useful the ad is for the user. To determine the auction time quality components, we look at a number of different factors, including the ad's expected click-through rate, the relevance of the ad to the user's search, and the quality of the ad creative and the advertiser's landing page. The higher the quality ad, the lower the bid necessary to attain a given ad rank. In fact, the highest bidder will also not necessarily be the highest-ranked ad. A higher-quality ad with a lower bid can outrank a higher bid with a lower-quality ad. In this case, the higher-quality ad with a lower bid will be displayed first. Moreover, ads that do not meet our baseline quality thresholds will not be eligible to run regardless of their bid amount. I'm going to transition now to our shopping results and products. If a user searches for a certain retail product or query, our search engine results page will display organic search results along with any relevant ads, including ads in the shopping unit. Identified through the ads badge or ads label. Text ads typically appear below the shopping unit, which we launched in South Africa in two thousand and seventeen, and organic results appear below the text ads. We allocate a certain amount of space to ads, whether shopping or text ads, and so there will always be space on the search engine results page for organic results. In other words, the shopping unit is displayed in the space that would otherwise be used for text ads. It therefore does not reduce space, reduce space. Sorry, am I cutting out? I apologize.
I think if your colleagues put their mics off, then you wouldn't get the feedback.
Go ahead. Yeah, I can hear, I can hear just fine, sorry. Okay, I'll, I'll jump right back in here. I think what I was, the point I was trying to make is that the shopping unit is displayed in a space that would otherwise be used for text ads. So it does not reduce the space allocated to organic results. Ads in the shopping unit link directly to the retailers offering the relevant products, not to Google Shopping. In addition to the shopping unit on google.com, we launched the shopping property in South Africa in late two thousand and seventeen. The shopping property is accessible through the shopping tab or via the view more link at the end of the shopping unit carousel on google.com. On the shopping property, we display both free listings and paid results labeled as ads. Free listings are ranked based on relevance, including based on user search terms and other Google activity. These unpaid results on the shopping property are selected from merchant center feeds from retailers with a merchant center account that have opted into our free listings program. We're not compensated for clicks on these results. In the case of ads, advertiser payment to Google may also influence how items are ranked and grouped and were compensated for clicks on the ads. To participate in shopping ads, retailers need to create and link a merchant center account to their Google Ads account and create a shopping campaign in Google Ads. Prior to two thousand and twenty, all offers on the shopping property were paid ads. In two thousand and twenty, we launched free listings in South Africa and around the world to give more merchants the ability to get on Google without participating in ads. We'll cover free listings in more detail later in the presentation. Google Shopping benefits both consumers and business users. On the consumer side, Google Shopping allows consumers to quickly search thousands of stores and millions of products and compare prices and places to buy, both online and in store. We provide consumers with links directly to relevant merchants. No transactions are completed on Google. Instead, users are directed to a buy page on a merchant's websites to engage directly with them. Including for the purposes of purchasing the product that they're interested in. There are also significant benefits to business users. Merchants benefit from the opportunity to be discovered by consumers looking for their products to the shopping platform, whether they participate in free listings, ads or both. And merchants choose to participate in ads, set the price they're willing to pay for each click on their ads and their charge on a cost per click basis. Retailers that don't use Google Shopping also have an opportunity to have their products discovered on Google, including on the Google Search Results page. A retailer, marketplace, e-commerce platform or price comparison service can set up a Google Ads campaign, which allows them to bid to show text ads. Smaller, smaller businesses are not disadvantaged here because, as I discussed earlier, bid amount is just one of the factors considered in ad placement. With other factors such as ad quality and relevance being crucial considerations. These businesses may also appear in the organic search results on google.com as long as their websites are discoverable by our web crawlers. And if our search algorithms identify the website as being relevant to the user's search. As mentioned, the shopping unit only appears in the space reserved for ads and therefore does not take space dedicated for organic results. Finally, Google Shopping. Avoid such bias by ranking free listings based on relevance to the user's query and ads based on relevance and auction outcomes. Our algorithms are applied consistently and objectively with the aim of identifying the most relevant results for users. This benefits business users as well as it creates opportunities for both big and small retailers. Lastly, I'd like to touch on our shopping policies, which are designed to protect users from harmful ads like for counterfeit goods. Merchants are informed of our shopping policies when they sign up for a merchant center account and these policies are available in our external help center pages. The policies make clear what merchants need to do to comply and the steps we will take for merchants who do not comply. Including the circumstances in which their accounts may be suspended for violating our policies. And we have detailed procedures in place to apply these policies consistently. Merchant center accounts are reviewed regularly for policy compliance. If it's found that a merchant's products or website are not in compliance with our shopping policies. The merchant will receive a warning email with more details about the issue, information on how to fix it and a timeframe on which to fix the issues. During the warning period, the merchant will continue to be able to show his products through shopping ads and free listings in most cases. Merchants which have had their accounts suspended due to non-compliance can appeal and ask for their account to be reviewed for relisting. Alistair Moquena will now be giving, giving more information about Google Shopping from a South African context and. And regarding some of our South African focused initiatives.
Thanks very much, Adam. Good afternoon to the panel. E-commerce platforms, including price comparison services, are helpful because they provide users with product search and comparison functionality. Google Shopping is just one of a large number of e-commerce providers in South Africa. Despite different business models, these platforms all compete vigorously for user attention and relationships with retailers. For example, a number of important brick and mortar retailers have good online offerings and compete vigorously with other providers. These retailers, such as Woolworths and Pick 'n Pay, benefit from brand recognition as well as customer loyalty. There are a number of large e-commerce platforms in South Africa, like Takealot and Zando. Amazon is also becoming an important e-commerce platform in this country. It should be noted that competition among online platforms cannot be viewed in a vacuum. In fact, most Africans still shop in person and this means online platforms face competition from the physical operations of brick and mortar retailers. Which often have high ad spend and revenues. It's important to us that in every country where we operate, the developers and business users that interact with our products have opportunity to succeed and actually grow their business. In addition to Google for Small Business, which provides free guidance on setting up a Google Business Profile. We also have Google for Startup Accelerator Program, which is a three month accelerator program for tech startups across the continent. This scheme provides mentorship, technical project support and workshops focused on a number of issues, including product design, custom acquisition as well as leadership development. We've also taken action to, to support the economic development of SMEs and entrepreneurs in South Africa. We've helped forty five thousand SMEs establish an online presence over the last twelve months. And we're also offering forty thousand developer scholarships to beginner and intermediate developers across Africa this year. We're also keen to provide specific tailored support to historically marginalized groups. We provided a grant of seven point five million rand to the Yez Foundation, which has enabled one hundred and sixty five young Black Africans to take part in a year long work placement program. We've also spent seven fifty thousand rands in community grants which was provided to Thought Africa. And this was in aid of distributing eddy care packs to children who were forced out of education due to COVID. And we've also donated nine hundred thousand to Pride of Africa in, in the form of a community grant to support the LGBTD plus community through the pandemic. And in October two thousand and twenty one, our global CEO Sundar Pichai announced a billion dollar program of investment in Africa over the next five years. To support a range of initiatives which we spoke about yesterday. I'd not like to introduce you to a black female owned business called Native Child. Native Child is a natural hair and body care brand, which was created for the underserved needs of women of color. The owner is Sonto. She's passionate about both hair and health. She develops and locally manufactures a natural based hair care system specifically formulated for the needs of Afro kinky ethnic type hair. Google, namely Google My Business as well as Google Ads, has helped her grow her business globally and she now employs fourteen people. And I'd like to take you through the video shortly.
Native Child is a plant based hair care and body care brand. I felt like there wasn't anything on the market really that spoke to my needs as an African woman. I wanted to create a brand that someone that looked like me can identify with and immediately go, oh wow, so this is for me. I would have grown quite a bit from when we started. It was a team of three. We are about fourteen employees at the moment. Google has enabled us to reach more clients. They're able to find out where we are, they're able to go to our website. So it's increased our revenue by about twenty percent and increased our online presence as well. Because of insights, you're able to see what campaigns worked, what didn't. And you just get that feedback of how much you spent and how much of that was a return on investment. Google My Business is great in that we are able to get feedback from our customers and they can get to know like the spirit of the company. It gives it that personal touch. It just keeps that engagement going and they feel like they're part of, they're part of us. It is exciting to see this little baby of a company that came out of South Africa is now all over the world. Google is definitely assisting us in becoming that global brand that I've dreamt of being.
Onto free listings on Google Shopping. Since the launch of free listings, the Google Shopping tab now consists primarily of free listings. Which helps merchants better connect with consumers regardless of whether they advertise on Google or not. Retailers are able to segment traffic from free listings in merchant center to get further granularity in click reporting. Enabling them to provide a high quality feed, which improves user experience because of its relevance. Free listings gives retailers, including SMEs, the opportunity of being exposed to people who come to Google Shopping every day. Shoppers can make purchases from free listings via checkout on retailers' websites or at their local stores by including storefront information. Now, many people do shopping related searches on Google each day. By participating in free product listings, retailers' product offers may be eligible to show across different Google surfaces. Like the shopping tab, Google Search, Google Images, Google Maps, as well as Google Lens. Free listings vary based on data requirements, for example, enhanced. Absolutely, for example, enhanced listings on the shopping tab require more product data and require retailers to comply with both policies for free listings and shopping ads. Retailers can show their products in free listings on the shopping tab by opting in their products. SMEs in particular benefit from increased clicks as a result of these free listings. And as we've already mentioned, Google Ads can also provide SMEs with another way to reach consumers to promote and sell their brands. Using Google Ads provides an efficient way to improve discoverability. And this can be particularly beneficial for SMEs who very often lack the resources to pay for other forms of mass advertising. With that, I'd like to hand over to Slot and May, who will provide a short overview of the European Commission's shopping decision.
Hi, hi, I'm Isabel. I'm, I'm one of the legal team. I'm actually one of the legal team that's working with Google in relation to this process rather than the shopping process. But we wanted to say a few words because I think you'd indicated you were interested in. Other regulatory processes and the EC shopping case was specifically mentioned in the statement of issues. The effect of that case is that, you know, the shopping unit as it's used within the EU enables comparison shopping services to bid to place. Product ads in the shopping unit. I'm sure you're aware that decision's under appeal, so there's a limit to what we can say, particularly in terms of detailed reasoning on the case. But I think the point we thought was worth bringing out was that, you know, the EC case and the EC remedy, to the extent that that is something. People are looking at, does need to be seen in the specific context of the EU markets that were under review. That's a point the commission's made itself. And they also made the point that, you know, even within the EU, different types of specialized search would have different characteristics and would need to be considered individually. That's, that's approach and way of thinking is consistent with the experience we've had. In other jurisdictions that have looked at Google Shopping, so for example, the US, Brazil and Canada. You know, looked at similar issues to the EC but didn't find the same concerns in their jurisdiction that the EC identified. In terms of the South Africa specific context, the point we thought worth bringing out is that we think there are. You know, material differences in market conditions compared to the EU in particular, and this may be because of differences in the. The timing of online shopping taking off, you know, our understanding is there's much less use of product search aggregators. Who are the main focus of the EC remedy within South Africa, you know, as compared to marketplaces and use of online retailers directly. I'm sure this is a topic we will come back to if it's of interest, so I'm going to stop there in the interest of time and. Hand over to Abby Pringle, who's going to be giving the panel an overview on Google Travel.
Thanks very much. My apologies, I've just lost my slides. There they go. My name is Abby Pringle and I'm a product council covering travel at Google. Travel planning is complex, expensive and time consuming. Google's travel products are intended to help users research and plan travel by organizing complex information in a way that allows users to make fast effortless decisions with confidence. Today, I will focus on Google's flight and hotel products, which help users find ways to get to their destination and find places to stay when they arrive. In the case of both flights and hotels, Google acts as an aggregator or meta search engine. Google is not an OTA and does not sell plane tickets or hotel rooms, but rather displays prices and booking links provided to us by third parties. Google Flights aggregates scheduled price and availability information from hundreds of airlines and online travel agents or OTAs. To provide users with a comprehensive view of their flight options. Once a consumer selects a preferred itinerary, Google displays links to purchase the itinerary through the airlines and or OTAs that we know can sell their ticket. Information displayed on flights is licensed through our third party partners, but flights is a fully organic experience. No airline or OTA pays Google to appear in the product, nor does any commercial relationship influence ranking. Both flight results and booking links are ranked by relevance according to objective principles. Google's hotel search offering seeks to provide comprehensive and reliable information to help users make informed choices about where to stay and how to purchase a room. Hotel search results include detailed information about each property. Including a link to hotel website and other contact information, photos, amenities, location and neighborhood descriptions, directions and user reviews. These results may also include price and availability information. Google gets information about hotels from a variety of sources, including from hotel owners who claim the business via Google My Business. A free service that allows business owners to provide and update information to improve their presence on Google. We also license data directly from hotel industry partners like hotel owners, OTAs, meta search engines and other industry intermediaries. Google offers our hotel partners two ways to display prices and booking links to Google users on the hotel property. The first is free booking links, which as the name suggests are unpaid and ranked organically. And paid booking links or hotel ads, which let partners bid in Google's ad auction to promote their booking links. We'll look at these, at how these appear a bit later, but all paid placements on hotel search are indicated by an ad label, the same one used across Google properties. This slide is simply to highlight some key points about ranking on Google's travel properties. First, as noted, results shown to users on Google flights are entirely organic. There are no ads and there is no payment to participate in the flight's product at all. Flight's results are objectively ranked based on their relevance to the user query. Third parties cannot pay to appear in organic results or pay to influence where they are ranked in those results. The hotel's property includes both organic results and paid ads. When a user searches for a hotel, Google will return a list of organically ranked hotels responsive to the user's query. Users may see up to two paid ads at the top of that list results, which will be indicated by the ad badge and the identity of the advertiser. Once a user selects a specific hotel, she may see a combination. she may see a combination of paid and unpaid links to book a room in that hotel. To demonstrate the principles we've discussed so far, I thought it would be useful to walk through a user's travel search journey, starting with a search on google.com. I'll highlight a hotel search in this discussion, but I'm happy to address questions about the flight search journey as well. Here, appreciating this is rather small, the user searched for hotels in Cape Town. The search results page contains text ads at the top of the page, indicated by the ad label, followed by organic results. In this case, the organic results includes the hotel's unit and several blue links, usually about 10 on the first page. The hotel's unit contains the top hotels that match the user's query, ranked organically by relevance. The unit appears when Google's algorithms determine that it is relevant and helpful to respond to the user query and it is ranked by those algorithms as well. As my colleague explained earlier, our search algorithms compare not only different websites, but also different types of results, including units like this one. For some queries, the unit is highly relevant and useful and the unit ranks high among organic results. However, the majority of the page remains open for the display of other search results. Before we continue on our hotel search journey, I will note here that the experience on the search results page is very similar for a user searching for flights. The flights unit is also an organic unit and may appear when our algorithms determine it's responsive and helpful to the user's query. The unit is also ranked organically by our algorithms. Flight's results in the units are relevant, flights results shown in the unit are relevant to the query and are sorted by price. As with the whole of flights, there is no payment to appear in the unit. There may be a significant variation in the size of a flight's unit as well. For example, if I search for flights on a common route like New York to London, I might see about 15 different flight options, which makes the unit larger. Or a less common route may show only a few options or not at all. However, the size of the unit does not impact the number of other blue links that appear on the search results page. Returning to our user searching for hotels in Cape Town. If the user clicks on the hotel's unit, she will arrive on the hotel's property, or what we sometimes call the hotel search immersive. By clicking onto Google's property, however, the user will still be presented with many opportunities to engage with other travel providers through both paid and unpaid and organic content. When she arrives, she will see a list of hotels responsive to her original query alongside a map showing the location of the hotels in the list. Hotel search results are ranked by an algorithm that takes dozens of inputs into account, including the hotel's location, price, user ratings and reviews and many other factors. Users have a number of options to filter and resort these results. There is no payment to Google to appear in these results, nor does their relationship with Google impact a hotel's appearance in the rankings. Indeed, any hotel that Google knows to exist in the world can appear. The first page of results can show up to 14 organic results, assuming at least 14 hotels are relevant to the query. At the top of that first page, may be up to two paid ads. This is a type of hotel ad called a property promotion ad, as it allows advertisers to promote a particular property to users looking for hotels in that area. These ads are indicated by the ad label and the identity of the advertiser is next to the label. The ads are ranked according to Google's ad auction and have no influence on the organic results below. When a Google user clicks on a specific hotel, she will arrive on that hotel's place sheet, where she can find detailed information about the hotel, including a link to the hotel's website and other contact information, photos, user reviews and amenities. She may also find options to book rooms in the hotel if they are available. As mentioned, hotel owners can use Google My Business to ensure that the information on this page is up to date, upload photos, respond to user reviews and generally manage their presence on Google. Indeed, even including a website link and phone number can dramatically improve a hotel's presence on Google. The next opportunity for partner participation is displaying booking links on the hotel's place sheet. On this slide, we can see the overview tab for the hotel, which shows two sets of booking links. The first section, indicated by ads featured options in the red square rectangle, are a type of hotel ad called booking link ads. Advertisers bid to appear in these slots, which are ranked by Google's ad auction according to their ad rank, which, as my colleague explained, is a combination of bid and ad quality. Below, indicated by all options, are free booking links. There is no payment to participate and these links are ranked by relevance. Free booking links offer the opportunity for entities of any size that can sell rooms in this hotel to provide price and availability information to date to Google and direct free, highly qualified traffic to their booking site. To ensure that we're showing accurate information to our users and that they have a positive booking experience, hotel partners that participate in booking links must comply with a series of policies that govern price accuracy, the inclusion of all mandatory taxes and fees and the referral or landing page experience. This overview tab shows a sample of all available booking links. But if a user clicks on the more options at the bottom of this tab or navigates to the prices tab at the top of the page, she will see as many free booking links as we have available. In this particular example, there are 14 different booking link choices. Paid ads remain, remain limited to the four slots that we see here. At this point, the next step in the user's journey depends on what they came to Google to achieve. In most cases, users leave the place sheet through an organic click, such as clicking directly on the hotel's website. Users may be early in their exploration process and simply interested in learning more about hotels in the area or this hotel in particular. But if the user is ready to book, clicking on any booking link, free or paid, will take her directly to the partner's website to complete her transaction. In short, Google provides a number of opportunities for other travel providers to participate in hotel search and ads, offering rich information and choice to users and supporting a healthy travel ecosystem. Now that I've covered the travel user journey at a high level, I'll hand over to Alastair to give you an overview of travel in South Africa.
Thanks, Abby. So users can look for flights and accommodation through a number of different platforms such as online travel agents, MSEs and hotel and flight providers, or a combination of these platforms. These all offer consumers ways to search for and book a particular accommodation or flight option. Looking at South African consumers in particular, they have a diverse range of platforms to choose from when booking holidays. As shown on this slide, this includes domestic platforms like Travel Start, Travel Check, as well as international platforms like booking.com, Airbnb and TripAdvisor. Compared with some of these more established providers, Google has relatively limited consumer usage as it is fairly new to this area. And South African travel aggregators are steadily growing in popularity. Like travel.coza, which describes itself as South Africa's largest holiday website, for example. An important point to make is that Google does not sell hotel rooms or flights itself. It links users to OTAs or MSEs or directly to the accommodation or flight providers. As we do not have our own booking platforms, we are unable to participate in booking links or promote our own travel products. So looking at the support that we provide SMEs in tourism, I'd like to tell a little bit more about what we do in this space. Local businesses can use Google to promote and enhance the profile of their businesses. As Abby has explained, there are opportunities for travel businesses to reach consumers through our flights and hotel products. On google.com, travel businesses can also appear in organic search results or in the text ad. Our search algorithms and ads auctions apply consistently to SMEs as well as to more established providers. We also have a number of initiatives aimed specifically at uplifting local travel business and these are particularly important as the travel industry continues to recover from COVID. One thing we do is provide self-service dashboards available to help businesses address and analyze demand exploration and how the demand for global mobility is being affected. Some dashboards provide insights for Google partners about the movers and shakers on destinations and which geographies require adjustment in the advertising strategy. We also have dashboards that aid to provide forward-looking or look ahead insights around future trip durations as well as trip types. We also provide small businesses that are seeking to gain more traction with users through advertising or marketing with support and best practice in designing an advertising strategy and we draw on our global team for advertising experts. What I will now do is hand over to my colleague Abongile just to elaborate a little bit more on the support we offer tourism SMEs.
Thank you, Alista. My name is Abongile Demashale, responsible for government affairs and public policy in South Africa. I will be taking you through some of the case studies that we have in South Africa, showcasing how we support small businesses in the sector and also promote the industry as well. Another way that Google supports small travel businesses is by providing opportunities for them to appear via the Google My Business product. This allows small hotels to claim a location on Google Maps and share information about their businesses, which will then be displayed on both search and maps. We have also partnered with the South African Tourism Board to launch an online exhibition where visitors from all over the world can explore South Africa through a collection of 500 images and videos, 55 street views and 20 online exhibits. The partnership that we've entered with Google, with South African Tourism is similar to ones that we enter with pop bodies in other jurisdictions and it has four strategic pillars that guide implementation. The first one is to support destination marketing organizations such as tourism South Africa with technology. We offer a service of dashboards available through the flights reporting center to address demand exploration and how the demand for global mobility is being affected. Secondly, we enable the travel ecosystem through educating and upskilling small businesses to onboard online through local activations of free business listings and websites. The third one is through Google Arts and Culture, where we provide a virtual experience where consumers can see virtually the destinations and cultural heritage sites as well. Lastly, the influencer campaigns, press and influencer campaigns, where we assist in generating positive discoverable content about South Africa using Google products like Maps and YouTube Music. We've also made available a free tool, Marketing Kit. The Marketing Kit enables businesses to create free marketing content such as media posts, social media posts, posters and stickers. We've localized the site for the SSA region, which includes South Africa, and this was launched in October 2020. Now for the last case study before we close off, is the case study of the Jotham Guest House. Guest House owned by Kamindri. She bought a guest house, Jotham, in Durban in South Africa. I will allow for the video to play so that she can tell her story in her own words.
I bought this home 20 years ago. It was a broken down house, really dilapidated. Being a single mom, it was a sacrifice that I had to make. And making the most of the little that I had to be able to have this house. I found a wonderful man, we married and he's helped me with my dream that you see today at Jotham. We've been struggling to, to get well-known for years. I was already on the net, but I didn't know too much about it. Being older is so difficult because I didn't grow up with smartphones and technology. I realized if you are not groomed and educating yourself towards technology, you will be left behind. So I had to educate myself. In March 2017, I attended Google digital training. It opened up a new avenue for marketing my business. When people are looking for accommodation in Durban and I asked them, where did you find me? Oh, we checked on Google. The proof is in the increase of my turnover, which is 40% higher. Make your own future. This is your life and no one is responsible for this life but you.
Thank you for that. As you can see, through the digital skills program that she attended, she was able to increase her turnover by 50, 40%, as she indicated, and has hired two new employees. Jotham now welcomes guests from South Africa, neighboring Botswana, even as far as the United Kingdom. The last slide will basically take you through the Google Arts and Culture program that we have in Google. Google Arts and Culture assists us to curate and preserve cultural content from around the world. In South Africa, we have worked with 12 partners and we are continuously onboarding new ones. On this slide, we have some examples of how we've used technology to showcase South Africa's rich heritage to people around the world. With our free technologies and storytelling tools, we can offer to preserve and promote the must-visit destinations and cultural artifacts that are integral to the country's history and culture. We've assisted to digitize top locations with our street viewer maps and as well as digitize artworks and artifacts in our super, with our super-high resolution with the art camera. The first example on this slide is, it shows how we commemorated the release of Nelson Mandela 30 years ago. And this was held on the 14th of February 2021. We, we worked with five museums. They came together to commemorate the release of Nelson Mandela through an online project which was launched in Cape Town. The second one was to celebrate Africa Day, where Google Arts and Culture and YouTube collaborated on the 25th of May through an exhibition, shining light on African art, food, fashion and communities with over 26 museums having participated and launched. The event was launched at the YouTube COVID-19 benefit concert. Last but not least was the August 9 Women's Day commemoration, where we worked together with the Nelson Mandela Foundation, where we celebrated 24 women who have helped elevate the status of women in South Africa, including Mamwe Dematikisela Mandela, Grasha Michelle and Kasta Simeni. Chair and the panel that brings us to the end of our presentation. We would like to thank you as the Commission for your time and we now welcome any questions that you may have. I hope through our presentations in the last two days, we have assisted to demonstrate the helpfulness and impact of Google products to both individuals as well as small businesses in South Africa. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abongile. I think tonight we'll, we'll press ahead and maybe take a break at the top of the hour. I had a question yesterday around the split of search globally and also South Africa and Africa with the shift to mobile. And Agnieszka, you said the search team was obviously going to be here. So maybe can I just ask how search has shifted from desktop to mobile globally and in South Africa? Just the proportion that is now mobile?
I can start. I don't have specific numbers on mobile versus desktop, but it's, it's something that we have focused on and we, we think is very important. We see a lot of users who are coming online, who are looking at content on their phone first and foremost versus on their desk, on the desktop. A few years back, we publicly announced that this is something that we were going to prioritize and something that we thought was important for, for our search ranking algorithm to understand what the mobile landing page for a site was. And so, you know, this is something that we, it's what I had mentioned earlier in the presentation. This is one of the things that we announced on the, on the Google search or the Google blog, basically informing developers that this is a signal that we were going to focus on, that we were going to prioritize and something that we were hoping that mobile developers would, would follow fashion with so that they would make their sites more mobile-friendly. So that's, you know, so that's something that users will be able to find the information that they're looking for faster on the mobile page. I'm not sure if others on the, on the panel or sorry, on the Google side would be able to speak to the, the numbers in South Africa. I'll open up to my group.
All right. The, look, all I wanted was the split. I mean, as I understand, mobile is bigger than desktop. But if Google doesn't know, then, then, then yes, that's interesting. But can I also just ask that we keep the responses down to, to sort of answering the question? It's just, we've got to cover search, shopping and travel in a very short space of time. So the specific question was, what was the split? If there is no knowledge within Google of what the split is between mobile and desktop globally, then, then I'll move on. But if there is an answer, I'll give you a chance.
I don't think I have the answer for you right now, but we can certainly come back with it subsequently. I don't think I have the answer for you right now, but we can certainly come back with it subsequently.
All right. I just want to talk about search behavior. So as we understand it from everything that has been published, less than 1% of searches go to page two. Is that correct?
I don't have that information in front of me, but if you have, if you have that information, we can assume that you're working off of proper facts.
Yeah, I'm just a little surprised that we've got the search team here, that this would seemingly be the most basic information. So, I mean, can you confirm it or not?
I can confirm it after the fact. I can go back and speak with our product teams and understand, get this specific information and share it back with the panel.
All right. Look, I'm going to put it to you, it is less than 1% because that's what a lot of academic studies say. And I would appreciate a degree of cooperation. I mean, I would think, as I said, this is Google Search. They organize the world's information. They make their money from search. These should be standard information available to the team. So I-
The issue we've got is that we didn't know in advance what stats you wanted and some of the information you're asking for is touching on things that are commercially sensitive, which is making it hard for people to answer on the spot on specific data without being able to check where it's coming from.
Then, well then, let's go to a few more facts and let me just put it to the public at least. I mean, a lot of people who advertise on Google talk about the fold, which is basically the point at which you may scroll. So on a mobile device, it would be the point of having to scroll down and on a desktop, it would be the point, the bottom of the first screen. And as we understand, less than 20% of product search at least goes to the bottom of the page. And I will put it to you expecting maybe no answer, but but what proportion actually scrolls at all? I mean, we would probably think it's not that significant. But if you have an answer, please, we welcome that.
Again, I don't think we can provide a specific answer on that, although I do want to say that, you know, the purpose of Google Search is to provide the most relevant results. The expectation is that the most relevant information will appear on that first page. And so if we're doing our job properly, the most relevant information will appear on the first page and users won't necessarily feel the need to go to the second page because what they are looking for will show up on that first page.
Well, we're going to come to that. But, I mean, if less than 1% of searches go to page two, then effectively almost all the clicks on page one. And on a mobile, that would include the scroll down, but you reach a point. And probably a high proportion of those clicks are so-called above the fold. I think that's a reasonable conclusion. I would also expect that more clicks were on the first result than the second result than on the third result. Are you able to comment on any of those propositions?
I think your premise is correct. I think as we look at the search results page, we want the most relevant information to surface highly on the first page and you get decreasing relevance as you proceed down to the second, third, fourth, fifth, and so on, so on pages. So if we're doing our job properly, the most relevant information should be the first result and that should be what most users are clicking.
You, I think it was mentioned twice in the presentation that 80% of searches have no ads. I just wanted to ask about product search. So we're dealing with, in essence, the commercial, online commercial world of platforms for e-commerce, travel. And and so do you have a statistic when someone is looking for an actual product? So this is something to your point where advertisers may obviously want to target what proportion of those searches say, just take your two categories, shopping and travel, that would attract no ads?
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. I think first I just want to clarify the point about 80%. The fact that we had provided was on average, 80% of queries don't return ads in the top slots. So setting that aside, today I don't have the specifics of, you know, what the number of queries that return product or travel results. But that's certainly something that we can go back to our product teams and provide the panel.
The, I mean, my guess would be very few. Because obviously these are things advertisers are interested in, which is the basis for why you may get an ad and someone may bid on a result. So the only only indication may be that, that on your point, maybe the quality of ad and relevance is not sufficiently close in order to put up an ad. But if I'm going to, I mean, anytime I've typed in running shoes or hotels, I'm going to get ads. That's the experience that we have certainly as consumers. So, I mean, would you accept that probably a high proportion of these are going to be ad-based?
Yeah, I think as Dan mentioned, you know, our objective is to show the most relevant results to users and to identify what users are looking for. So on a query like running shoes, we've learned over time that that's a highly commercial query. And in that particular instance, that it's a shoppy query or it has shopping intent. Therefore, we should be showing product ads or text ads or both, as we showed in the presentation in response to that user's query in order to satisfy their intent and provide them with the most relevant results.
Well, that's what, I mean, maybe just to pick up that point, I mean, obviously in ad, there's an relevant component, but there's also a paid component. If it was purely on relevance, it would be who comes first in an organic search. I mean, is that not true?
Yes, certainly. You know, as I mentioned in the presentation, the ads are, we calculate an ad rank for every ad query. And so ad rank is comprised of a number of pieces and one of those pieces is bit amount. But there are a number of other factors that go into determining ad rank. And those factors are crucial and they include, of course, the relevance and usefulness of an ad, quality of the ad and the advertiser's website and the extensions. And even there, even the quality, there are details into the quality components that we could talk about and then that we look to. So it's a complex determination for each ad. It doesn't solely depend on bid. And overall, higher quality ads typically lead to better user experiences for, and that is ultimately our objective.
But if I wanted to compare what the most relevant was, if I did a Google search, I could look at what the ad comes up and I could scroll down and look at the organic. And the organic is, let's say, untainted by the bid and has all of those relevance components where the ad has that additional component. And sometimes they may be the same, sometimes they may be different.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of pieces here. One, you know, just speaking to commercial or shopping, shopping queries for retail products. We have additional signals that we may not have in the organic context that help us best identify what a user is trying to retrieve with their query. For example, the shopping advertisers provide us with very detailed feed data, including images, prices, you know, location of the products and also direct buy pages for products. So when you're clicking on a shopping ad that's relevant to the query, we're providing the user with more information and the ability to go directly to the advertiser's buy page. Whereas that may not be true in the organic context because we don't have as much information.
Understood. On the, on the, just on the evolution of the page. I mean, you pointed out, I suppose, maybe for those old enough as me to appreciate, ads probably started on the right-hand side only. They migrated across into the sort of search results. And obviously on mobile, there is no right-hand side. It's only a scrollable portion. But it would appear that they become less and less distinguishable from search results. So although you say in your presentation, you're presenting ads. You know, this was, they were different colors, they had sponsored link. Now it's shrunk to an ad that was blue, now it's black. So almost the evolution is that they were quite separate, almost like a display ad and have become far more integrated with the search ranking component. So it appears to us at least that it's become less and less distinguishable for the consumer, that these are different. The ad label is there, I give you, but the whole look and feel is fairly similar to organic results. Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can comment on that. We're an industry leader when it comes to providing unambiguous ad labeling and our ad labeling is guided by extensive research that we do that shows that these labels that you see today clearly help distinguish between paid and organic content or organic listings. We also provide additional information about each of the ad units that gives our users transparency into why they're seeing an ad and the option to no longer see ads from any particular advertiser. We have clear business incentives to maintain a distinction between ads and organic results. This is because when users encounter a bad ad experience, it ends up deterring them from clicking on other ads. And when they click on a search ad, we want it to be, or a shopping ad, we want it to be because the ad was relevant and useful, not because it was confusing. If we provide a bad user experience, they're less likely to come back to Google for their search needs.
The, I mean, the current setup is, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, well, maybe you can tell me, what are the maximum number of ads that can appear at the top, at the bottom? And, and how, what's the sort of minimum number of organic results on the typical search engine results page?
Sure, I can start and chime in if he has anything additional to add on the organic piece. We show a maximum of four text ads at the top of the page and at the bottom of the page, you can also see up to four text ads. The shopping unit, to the extent that it's relevant to a user's query, would displace text ads at the top of the page. So we're not displacing organic results by, excuse me, the inclusion of the shopping unit. Rather, the ads space is fixed. In terms of the number of organic listings, we show 10 blue links between each, you know, the top and bottom ad unit, whether it's on, you know, mobile scroll or on desktop between pages. And then, you know, Dan, if you have anything to add on the organic piece, please.
No, that covered it.
So in essence, the maximum would be eight out of 18 text-based results would be ads. And then, as you put it, the shopping appears as a displacement for one of the ads. What about the travel unit? I mean, is that displacing an ad or is that displacing an organic result?
Sure, I can speak to that. The travel units are organic results. And generally, the travel units do not displace other organic results. There will still be an average of 10 results in addition to a travel unit.
Thank you. The, I mean, I suppose the impression one gets doing the searches and maybe one is more aware, running an inquiry where you're running Google searches just to see what happens and understand when we get the information and input from Google. But but that in many cases, when you're doing product or commercial, I think you put it, commercial search, that there is frequently not an organic result above the fold. That once you've put in a few ads, shopping or the travel unit, and we'll come to whether that's an ad or an organic. But typically, the organics are below the fold. Again, is that a fair statement?
I think, you know, Dan can jump in here as well, but I believe that, you know, a lot of this depends on what the device and browser that you're looking at. You know, I think the point to make from an ads perspective is that the space reserved for ads is fixed. And so regardless of the number of ads that we could possibly return, we don't, we don't displace organic results. So what you see above or below the fold may depend on device, browser type and things like that.
The other point that I'll add here is just, you know, going back to what we talked about in the presentation, our end goal is to provide users with the most relevant and useful information in response to their query. You know, that may be an ad, that may be a travel unit, that may be a blue link. What we decide to show, you know, in those first few results is dependent on that. And so if you see a travel unit at the top, it's likely because we've looked at your query and we've decided that there's a high travel intent and we think this is the best result.
And just to add, to just add to that point, travel results are not fixed at the top of the page. The travel unit is ranked organically, just like any other element on the search results page.
Have you made this to respond, I mean, to the first point, I mean, is that really true? There's an ad there because someone's bid on it. So is it really that Google has determined this is the best result? Or has Google determined that an ad of sufficient quality, yes, someone has bid and therefore there is space for that ad and therefore is placed at the top? That seems to be the more accurate depiction of why there's an ad at the top. I mean, surely that must be the case.
I think there's a, there's a couple of points to make here. One, you know, with respect to whether shopping, whether it's a shopping unit or travel unit that we may show, you know, those units depend on the type of query. And we're trying to determine what it is that the user is looking for and whether we have the most useful information available. So on a non-commercial or non-shopping query, I think the one that I gave in the presentation was something about, you know, looking for information on a local election. You know, we typically wouldn't expect any ads to show. Certainly, we shouldn't see shopping ads to show in that, in that case, when a user's intent, as far as we can decipher from their query, is not commercial or not shopping. I think the other point to make is that if we simply return ads solely because somebody has bid on a keyword, we're not providing users with the best possible experience. And over time, when they, you know, click on these ads and realize that they're, you know, in your scenario where we're just putting up any ad that somebody has bid on regardless of its relationship and relevance to users' query, when somebody clicks on these ads and they return to Google because they're not relevant, they learn to not click on ads and they learn to go elsewhere for their search needs because they're not getting their most relevant results. So it's not in our interest to simply show whatever ads somebody bids on at the top of the page or trigger a shopping unit, for example, on a query that doesn't have shopping intent, provides a bad user experience. They don't, they learn not to click on these ads and they don't ultimately come back to us. And then I think, you know, I don't want to sort of ally this point, but quality is extremely important. And when an ad, when a query is commercial, if we don't have, or shoppy, if we don't have ads that that get over our quality threshold, we're not going to show them. For the same reason I just explained why, you know, we wouldn't show ads on a non-commercial query we wouldn't show ads on a non-commercial query in the first, first place because it's a really terrible user experience.
And, and I accept that, that there's a degree obviously of relevance that needs to be a threshold, as you put it, and that's part of your algorithm. So I don't want to be searching for election results and, and get an advert for running shoes. But if we're in the commercial world and I type in running shoes, there's going to be something relevant from an advertiser and in hotels the same. So it's almost, you know, we can take it to extremes and that would degrade the user experience. But if I'm looking for running shoes and to get a particular shoe in front of me, clearly I might expect that because, you know, that was my, my search in the first place. So there may be a minimum threshold, but in the commercial space, and that's what we really focused on here, it would appear that, that that threshold may be easily traversed by one or more advertisers.
If I might make just one comment in relation to that. I think it's important not to think of Google's generic web search algorithm as kind of giving some sort of objectively the best relevance out there. And then anything else is a kind of a sacrifice in terms of relevance. Because sometimes the web search algorithm can't discern that maybe a particular merchant has a, has a sale on or they've got some particular feature of the product that they want to advertise. The, the web search algorithm just simply doesn't know about. And so really, it can be the case that an ad where the advertiser is able to say, you know, there's 50% off a particular product and that can be in the site links and the user can see that set out and click directly to that kind of webpage that the merchant may have, may have an offer for, can really be more relevant than something said that the web search algorithm is able to surface, given the way a generic web search algorithm works. So I think it really is important to, to not think of the web search algorithm as sort of the ground truth and then anything else as a, as a kind of sacrifice in terms of relevance.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we're saying it's irrelevant. What, what I'm saying is that, you know, those results are influenced by the, the ad bid as well. And there is a minimum threshold, we accept that. All I'm saying is that in a commercial world, there will be a lot of relevance. So anytime I go searching, certainly under shopping products or travel, I will see at least one ad, most often many ads, depending on, on the type of search, obviously. And I think this is the point. I mean, shoppers and travelers or the people who sell those products or services know that these are two areas, at least where consumers do start online. Because it's precisely maybe the usefulness of search for that. But, I mean, again, as, as we understand, and you probably won't have the stats for us today, but, I mean, more than 50% of shopping journeys start online. And even in South Africa, we know that certain journeys to buy a car, buy a house, go shopping, even if I end up at a brick and mortar store, start online and that's where I, I search. Travel another one, a lot of booking online. So, so because the industries, these industries know that, they are going to bid on, on words and there will be a substantial number of ads typically. So let me just say, that's our impression. I don't know if you have a response.
Yeah, I'll just make one point on the way that the shopping and travel ads auction works that's distinguishable from the, the text ads auction. In the shopping and travel context, unlike in the text ads context, results are not determined based on keyword targeting by the advertiser. Instead, what we're doing is matching the user's query to the detailed feed data that I talked about a few minutes ago, that these advertisers provide to us. So it's not simply that in the case of shopping or travel ads, that an advertiser has chosen to bid on a specific keyword. And in that case, what we're trying to do is, again, match the user's query with the detailed product data in the case of shopping or travel data, in the case of travel, to the query.
Thank you. I think, I mean, so if I'm clear, if it's on shopping and we type in running shoes and you've got your carousel at the top, then you would look at who has paid for advertising on the Google Shopping Unit. And if they're, they have paid for advertising, then you would select from that group. Because obviously, the organic results are, are in the, what do you call it? The shopping property and would come through it at a later stage if the user clicked through. Is that correct then?
The, the shopping unit, yes, the shopping unit's an ads unit. And the way that, and, and that the, the product offers get into the shopping unit is that a retailer, e-commerce website creates a merchant center account, provides us with feed data about their products, the products that they wish to have advertised on Google. And they link that merchant center account to their Google Ads account and they set up a shopping campaign. And then we take that feed data and we parse it in response to a user's query and then return results based on a match of the query and the products that are given to us. Of course, at the discussion about ad rank holds, we look at, you know, quality of the landing page, the ad content, you know, relevance of the particular product to the query and also bid in order to show ads in the shopping unit. I think, sorry, one, one other point I wanted to make, I, I just remembered. The, the clicks on the, on the ads don't go to Google Shopping. And I, I don't know if that was clear or not in, in the presentation, but the clicks on ads in the shopping unit go directly to the retailer's site. And one of the important pieces of shopping ads is that the advertiser needs to provide us with a buy page for the product because we've learned that the best user experience is for a user to find a product they're looking for and be able to click directly to the retailer's website where they can purchase that product. So the clicks on these ads, they don't go to the property.
No, I think we, we, we understood that, but maybe the public didn't say that's helpful. Thank you. In these, at least in these two categories, I mean, Google is, I don't know, 98% plus search in South Africa. It may be different in other parts of the world. But if 50-odd percent start their journey online and often on Google, how you present your results does matter. It's going to matter for, for these, these two categories at least and, and maybe other categories as well. And because these are commercial products, because commercial companies are bidding on these with relevant results, what we are hearing consistently across players in this area is, is where you appear on Google matters, for one, and how much you have to spend matters. So we, we, well, let, put it this way, it surprised me to one point, a travel company said, or an ecommerce said, we look at their Google search ranking. That's how we choose which platform to go to. And what we are consistently seeing is, is that when we look at these platforms at least, the bulk of their spend is on Google AdWords or shopping or, or travel. Not so much on, on social media advertising. And, and that does mean they obviously have a bigger budget to appear more often. Their bidding strategy may, may affect that, but typically, they're going to adopt a bidding strategy that ensures they're going to use their budget. So the bigger players appear at the top of the search screen, above the fold, more often than any smaller player. And that seems the natural outcome of the current setup of the Google page. So let me get your, your responses to that.
Sure, I can, I can start. So the ads auction, you know, doesn't consider the size of the merchant or its position in the market. And as I mentioned, when discussing ad rank, the, the amount someone is willing to pay for an ad click is just one factor. Relevance, usefulness and the quality measures, quality of the ad, quality of the landing page are crucial considerations. What this means is not that it's, that it's not critical for small businesses or smaller players in the market to, 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 to bid, to have the highest bid in order to get their ads in front of potential customers. You know, in fact, a, a higher quality ad with a lower bid can and certainly does outrank a higher bid and lower quality ad in many cases. And the higher quality ad with the lower bid would be ranked first and higher up the page. So it's not determinative in any sense what the size of the merchant is or their position in the market. Those aren't factors we consider when we rank ads.
But I think the, the one thing you, you may be leaving out here is budget. So one interaction I had with the platform that says, yeah, by 8:30 in the morning, my budget's spent. I'm not appearing in ads for the rest of the day. And, and so budget does matter. Maybe a small player can outbid once or twice, but budget matters. And if they've run out of budget, then, then they're not in the game at all. I think the second point is, is just on quality. I mean, as I understand, that includes, as you say, the, the quality of the landing page and, and maybe, you know, whether it's relevant to users, how much they may convert or click through. Now, all of that could in fact be in the favor of a large platform too. They may put more into their website. They may, because of their popularity, have better conversion rates. So it may appear more, more relevant. So there is also potential perverse outcome where larger players actually may be able to bid lower than smaller players and still win the top spot. I mean, maybe if you can respond to that and the first point just on budget.
Sure. I guess to take the budget point first, I think, you know, you're, certainly the overall amount of money someone has to spend could make a difference in highly competitive, you know, on highly competitive queries. I don't have any statistics around that. I mean, I think that's generally, you know, generally correct in certain circumstances, but not correct in, you know, in, in response to every query. So, you know, I think we'd have to look at specific instances, which we're, we're certainly happy to do offline and provide more feedback there. And then, sorry, could you repeat the, the, just the sort of question? The second part of the question is to make sure I, I get at it correctly.
Second part of the question is, is that quality elements do not unequivocally favor a smaller player. They may, could in fact favor a larger player too, which means you can have the perverse result that a smaller player has to bid higher than a large player just to get that slot.
Yeah, I suppose that, you know, it's theoretically possible. I don't have any statistics in, in, you know, yet I think we'd have to look, you know, ad ranks calculated, let me say this, ad ranks calculated for each ad request, for each ad, for each ad request on each query. And so there's a unique outcome each time and, and it's different to, it's very difficult to quantify the, 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 one, the proportion of bid that plays into ad rank or how any one of the number of quality factors, all of which are scored separately and, you know, work, you know, independently and together to come up with ad rank. So it's a little difficult in, in the abstract to answer that question. It's certainly possible that a large retailer could have a, all very high quality components and therefore need to bid lower, but it's not necessarily true. And I don't know of any specific examples that I could give you on that front. I want to make one, sorry, I forgot to make one point on the, the budget, very quick point. You know, I just want to say, and I think this was on the slide, but I didn't mention it, that the auction's second priced. So it's not necessarily that the advertiser is paying what they bid to show up. They're only, they're only paying a minimal amount, the, the minimal amount necessary to, the minimal amount, sorry, excuse me, the minimal amount above the next highest ad-ranked offer. So that is also a factor in, you know, how long they have, how long their budget may last for any particular period.
Very quickly, I just, I just want to note that we've been talking about ads here specifically, but ads is just one component, how, how sites might get discovered through Google. And on the organic side, you know, we look for strong authoritative companies. You know, we want to surface those highly. We want to provide those, those results to users quickly, efficiently, make sure that they are able to find them. And so, you know, regardless of what's happening on the ad side, this is, you know, we, we want to surface high-quality businesses, authoritative businesses. And that, that's a way that, you know, these businesses can continue to get discovered through Google.
And, and we understand that, sorry, can I just, I mean, just in response, I mean, we understand that. And, and then, and that's the, I suppose, the complaint from some of the smaller platforms in South Africa is they are first on organic, but they're not getting the traffic that they used to. Because over time, more and more of this page is monetized. And so they're slipping below the fold and we'll come to, to, but I mean, travel in particular, where the travel unit pushes them further down. And so there is a sense that, that this has become a big money game. We are the best organic result. We are strong, we are relevant, but we're not being shown and we're not being discovered. So that is exactly the complaint, in a sense, from platforms that we're hearing. I mean, just then on, on, on budget, I mean, it also follows that if I've got a billion dollars to spend versus a million dollars to spend, that will last longer and I will certainly get far more, more top searches. So, so, yeah, I think, I mean, that's, that's the impression we are getting from the platforms in South Africa and confirming by looking at the confidential information from any of the platforms and how much they're spending on Google.
If I could just add one point, just taking a step back and thinking about Google's incentives. Google doesn't have an incentive to have a very small number of retailers appearing who, you know, who kind of effectively end up dominating the auction. Because that, compared to a situation where Google's showing a kind of very diverse range of merchants and advertisers more generally, clearly Google's results are going to be more relevant in the, in the, in the scenario where, where there's a large range of advertisers to select from. And that's important because I think you mentioned the stat that Google's, you, you mentioned Google's market share in South Africa. But if you think about how online shopping works, it's not a given that you're going to start your shopping session from a search engine. You might start it from a range of other sites, merchant platforms. And we've seen stats, not in South Africa unfortunately, but elsewhere, where a very high proportion, in fact, the majority of shopping sessions don't start with a search engine, but instead start with a major merchant platform. So Google has an incentive to make sure that what it's showing users, when people come to Google to do a product search, is relevant to induce them to, to, to actually start their shopping sessions at Google. And, and I think that goes in, in, in favor of saying, well, we want to make sure we've got a diverse set of, of merchants appearing in ads, rather than it always being, you know, the same old merchant platform.
Yeah, I don't think diverse number comes into the, the ad algorithm, but I may be wrong. I just want to maybe just end off with this. I mean, just to give some idea, because we can't obviously reveal any confidential information. And, but I mean, between your big travel companies, Airbnb, Booking and Expedia and Travel Advisor, I mean, they spend on marketing and, and obviously that is broader than Google's search, but a fair chunk is, is probably Google's search. I mean, they, they spent $13 billion on that in, in, in 2019. And their public accounts show that their marketing spend is, could be anywhere from 30% to 50% could be anywhere from thirty to fifty percent of their revenues. I mean, marketing is a massive component of the online platforms. And and so I think the concern for the panel at the moment, which we do need to explore more with Google is the funnel, a big part of the funnel starts at online search. And Google's increased monetization of the page and maybe consumer laziness, whatever we may want to call that. It may be your relevance, but in effect, you're determining the next part of the funnel quite substantially. And it's whether whether Google, because of its dominance in search, is creating dominance in some of the other platforms that we have in South Africa and maybe globally as well. Because you may have an incentive for a number of advertisers, what you need more than anything is is advertisers that that are here spending money in the top. So so that is starting, you know, an impression we're starting to get, and I wouldn't mind your feedback on that.
I can jump in on the travel side. As we noted in our submission to the commission, um, in fact, in South Africa and in most of the world, travel queries don't start on Google. Um, and there's actually quite a diverse set of websites that users visit instead. So as as my colleagues are mentioning, you know, Google's incentive really is to provide users with relevant information and links to places to find the information that they're looking for when they come to Google to start their search, which for travel, they don't usually.
Yeah, on the shopping side, I just want to emphasize something like Stephen said a couple of minutes ago, which is that we we certainly see that users are likely to multi-home turn, and that is turn to different platforms and retailers, depending on the requirements for a particular search. So it's not necessarily true in the shopping context that uh searches start on uh google.com. And as Stephen mentioned, we have statistics uh in in other jurisdictions that show that that many of these shopping journeys actually start elsewhere on other e-commerce retailers and directly on brick and mortar sites.
I mean, I have no doubt that Google's not the only way that journey starts, but it is a substantial portion of that. And we'll we'll come to the sort of, you know, um, obviously the shopping and and travel specifics relatively soon, but but if you are a substantial part of the start of the journey and large players can bid with bigger budgets for the top slots more consistently, certainly it appears to be part of their strategies that they need to be present on Google and bidding and in the top slots, even if it's shopping, even if it's travel. So on shopping, we we may well see that, you know, who are the big spenders know that this is a a way that consumers are directed to to their websites, and that's a consumer acquisition channel. So so certainly from their behavior, it's clear that they see Google as a fairly critical source of customer acquisition and growth. And often, the the attempts at growth will be matched by increased marketing spend. Unless there are further comments, may I suggest we take a five-minute comfort break and and come back, and then I'm keen to just chat about shopping and then travel. All right, we'll resume in in five minutes, if that's okay. You can switch your cameras off and and then we'll we'll start with shopping. All right, I think if we can resume, if if the Google team are there. Thank you very much. I just want to then look at shopping and then travel, as that's the order in which it was sort of dealt with. I mean, I would imagine, as I said, there's two areas people go online to to search. It's it is product shopping and it's also travel. So I would imagine shopping must be about the biggest vertical, if we had to use that terminology, or category search on Google. Is that is that um fair, or at least amongst the top? From an ads perspective?
From an ads perspective, I I would imagine that it's, you know, somewhere near the top, although I don't have the specific statistics in front of me about which, uh, you know, which verticals rank where within, you know, our ads ecosystem, that's absolutely something we can follow up with and 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 get bring back to the panel.
Yeah, I would imagine shopping and travel must rate there, just given um the commercial elements to that.
Well, there there are there are so many verticals that I I hesitate to to kind of pin them near the top and and verticals that I I don't cover. So um certainly in my my optic view, shopping is a is is a a large vertical. But um, you know, I I would want to make sure that we we got the statistics from from our teams and and get you the right information.
Yeah, and it's also worth mentioning that travel actually disappeared in the last twelve months. So we've seen very, very little travel revenue coming in because people were not traveling. So travel has become a very tiny part of the business.
But that should hopefully change.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've still got domestic travel too, but um, th- those are temporary moves in in the in the global sort of shift. I mean, just on on search, shopping presentation. I mean, as I understand the the shopping unit, as you call it, always appears at the top. And I mean, first is that
It can also appear on desktop, it can also appear in a grid on the right-hand side of the page in response to some results, so not as a carousel. And then, uh, you know, on on mobile, where we have infinite scroll, it would appear at the top of the page. And then, to the extent there are additional relevant shopping offers after uh, you know, every ten blue links, organic results.
And and as I've understood it, the carousel is ads only. If you want the unpaid results, you go to the shopping property, as you've called it in terms of terminology. Is that correct?
That's true that the shopping unit is ads only. Uh, we launched the free listings program uh just over a year ago. So um, it's it's relatively new and growing quickly. And and as Alistair mentioned, is this is the the vast majority of the shopping property. I I would need to check, but we are bringing, you know, what what's available in South Africa, but we are bringing free listings to search. It's a big effort of ours, and I I think we made some, you know, public statements about how we would like to bring free more free listings experiences to search. In the U S, we have a uh free listings in in jackpot or knowledge panel, which is the result we return when a user searches for a highly uh specific product like Bose QC two Quiet Comfort headphones, like something very specific. And in that instance, that unit is free listings in the U S. I'm not sure uh whether that's that treatment is live in South Africa, we certainly check.
Yeah, I'm not that I'm aware of, but um we can find out. And and again, just on on consumer habits. I mean, how many people actually go through to the shopping property? Because as he said, if you click on a product in the carousel, then you go straight to the merchant page. So what proportion of of clicks on that go to the property?
I don't have the the the, excuse me, the statistics in front of me, we, that's certainly something we can get. But I'm not sure how many uh clicks on either the ta- how many clicks there are as a proportion on either the shopping tab at the top of the google.com search results page or on the view more link. Um, you users also can navigate directly to the property, I think, and I think we may have provided some data, but I I don't have the specifics in front of me, happy to follow up.
But but shopping is your area of expertise, is that not right?
That's that's true, I just don't have the specific figures for um for the relative proportion of clicks and where they start, right?
And I wouldn't want you to reveal confidential information. I just think for the South African public, it would help to get an order of magnitude, you know. So we know that less than one percent went to the second page. But um, I mean, are we, are a lot of of consumers going to the property or not?
Just keep here with you, and that's one of the ones that was in your figure rather than ours. But I think generally on stats, it's going to be difficult for people to pull up numbers on the spot, but we don't have them in our heads. So it would be really helpful if you, if there's a series of stats you'd like. It would be really helpful if you could just give us a note, and then we can go away and see which ones we can source.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for the specific number because that may be confidential. So I'm asking for orders of magnitude. And I would think if we have the experts from those two verticals, that that those should be the most basic information that you would be aware of is if you were in those verticals. So I'm just asking whether we can get an order of magnitude.
Other come back to you.
All right, I mean, look, we we would put that that probably a fairly small proportion actually move through. I think the public would be interested to know as well. And so it would be useful if if we could get that out into the public domain as well. But of course, if you do ship through to the property, the ads are on the top, the carousel is at the top anyway. And you'd have to move down the page in order to get to the unpaid results. I mean, that's the way it's been presented as well, and that's where the consumer can go and and have a look.
Yeah, that that's not true on all all queries, there there are, you know, if if there aren't relevant shopping ads, we we wouldn't show the um the ads unit on the property. You could just have free listings. So there is a possibility that it wouldn't show on some on some queries.
Yeah, and I think we we would accept that, you know. And maybe the as you say, if there's nothing relevant, you won't get a carousel at all. And then you may get some text ads or you may get some some other results.
But I think, sorry, just to clarify, the point I was making was that on the property, because the free listings is a separate program, it's it's possible that you could have shopping results on the property that are from the free listings program, but not have any have any ads, so it wouldn't be text ads in that case. It would be uh potentially uh uh free listings results on on a query that doesn't generate ads because we don't have relevant ads.
All right, I I thought from the earlier question, which you answered, that the carousel has ads and it's labeled ads as well. So it wasn't my impression from your previous answer that there were free listings in there. I mean, at least not in South Africa, there's a jackpot in in the U S.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the shopping property, but that's true for google.com.
All right, yeah, no, and and I'm glad you clarified that because I think we might get confused between the the two, obviously. And if I start on google.com, that's what I would see. If I went and navigated to shopping on the top, um, then I might go direct to the property. I mean, I suppose that the proposition I would just put to you because of the the ads, the prominence on the top of the page, I would imagine, again, this has obviously attracted a lot of interest from from commercial companies, so retailers, um, and also the platforms. Certainly, when when I go and do random searches, often you find some of the big e-commerce platforms and some of the big retailers as well. And again, I would And again, I would imagine, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, those with larger budgets are going to appear more often. And because you have to have a shopping campaign and they're probably going to get more of the clicks that that come with that property.
I I don't think we can say that that's true necessarily because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, bid is only one component of ad rank, you know, qualities, relevance are crucial. So in that sense, simply because somebody's willing to pay more doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be the highest ranked ad. And with respect to to budget, I think it's highly dependent on a number of factors, the competitors of the query, what the other participants are willing to pay. So it's it's really hard to say in the abstract that the proposition that you stated is 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 generally true.
I would respectively disagree. I mean, budget does matter. And if that budget is spent, it means you have appeared more often. And and therefore, you are going to have more of the visibility on on Google search and you should get more of the clicks. I mean, otherwise, why spend that money? The retailers come there because it results in customer conversion. They don't come there for charity. So they're weighing up, how much am I spending on Google search? And what that delivers in terms of revenue and margin? So that that is what we consistently hear from people is I look at how much I'm willing to bid and how much I'm willing to spend because of the profits I expect to make. So if we do see a retailer who has spent a few hundred million versus one that is 200 million, sorry, 2 million, we would expect that they've had a lot more exposure and visibility on Google. I mean, it must follow.
We can we can certainly look at specific examples, but I'm I'd rather not say that that's true in the abstract without without knowing for certain that we can generalize in that in that way.
Yeah, look, I I I accept it as an economist, I could tell you that is true. And I could tell you that retail is big and small, tell you that's true. But be that as it may, I am interested in in the, as you put it, in the the EU case around Google Shopping. And and I am also interested in, I mean, at some point, there's a debate about that whether Google Shopping is a comparative shopping site or not. But as I understand from your presentation today, the point of Google Shopping is to allow people to search products and compare. That's what your presentation is telling us. And that seems to be what a price comparison site is also meant to do, is it not?
Yeah, I think the I'll I'll start, you know, here. The the distinction to make here is that the shopping unit in the context of the EC case and also generally is not the shopping unit on google.com is not a price comparison service itself. I don't think we take, you know, you know, Google Shopping certainly is a place where people go to compare merchants and products and there's, you know, filtering functionality. It is a price, Google Shopping, the shopping tab, you know, the the property is a competitor of price comparison services. The unit itself, again, either, you know, in the context of the EC case or generally is not considered a a price comparison service.
All right, but the unit displaces another price comparison service that might bid on Google AdWords to appear. So you could say it's an ad for the for your price comparison website. You always get the top spot. And if it's a ranking, then then other price comparison websites may be further down the page. Well, they must be because they can't be in the number one spot.
Well, I think a couple couple points to to respond. One, one is that, you know, price comparison services can participate in the shopping unit if they have relevant offers. So they can set up a merchants eligible offers, excuse me, if they can set up a merchant center account, create a Google Ads campaign and list any eligible offers in the shopping unit. The shopping unit, as we talked about earlier, doesn't send traffic to Google Shopping, it sends traffic directly to the merchants. So in that sense, we're not, you know, directing anyone to our shopping tab with the offers that are in the unit. Of course, price comparison services can also compete in in for in text ads. And to the extent that they're they're relevant and their websites are discoverable, our web crawlers can can show up in organic listings. So there are a number of places that they can show up, including in the shopping unit itself for any eligible offers they may have.
I mean, I just want to question you on your first statement. I mean, you say that a a price comparison website can appear in your your shopping unit, as we're calling it on the first page. I mean, I realize that is a remedy in the EU and I'll come to that. But outside of the remedy, which doesn't apply in South Africa because it hasn't been implemented in South Africa. I mean, if you need to be in that unit, you need a buy now button because it's got to go straight to the the merchant. So if I'm a price comparison website, I don't see how I get into that unit because I'm not selling you the product. I'm a price comparison website, much like Google Property. So maybe can you explain to me whether they can actually get into that without completely changing their business model?
You're you're absolutely right that that one of the, you know, important pieces of of shopping ads is the ability to take user directly to a buy page. Some CSSs in in Europe, and I understand, and maybe some of my South African colleagues can can speak to this. Some some can price comparison services in South Africa actually allow users to transact on their page. So for those offers where we can take the user directly from the shopping unit to a buy page on a, you know, e-commerce site generally, including a price comparison service that has offers where the user can transact on the page, then those offers can participate in the unit.
Well, thanks for that clarity. I mean, in essence, the, I suppose, the the EU case, and I don't, we don't need to go to the detail necessarily. But the EU, and I know you're appealing it, so you obviously disagree with the ruling. But they they felt Google was guilty of basically self-preferencing for shopping. And there seemed to be two components. One was obviously the placement at the top of the search results of Google Shopping Unit. So you occupied the number one slot, which I suppose typically has a better click-through rate. But on top of that, you've got images as well, which, as we know, improve or catch a user attention or searchers' attention. And so you'll probably you'll click-through rate may have been higher. There was also an element, which I believe has subsequently changed, that changes to the algorithm on Google Search demoted other price comparison websites. So it was almost a double whammy of having Google Shopping Unit at the top and being delegated down, at least on on generic search, at least. And the evidence seemed to be that those sites lost traffic over time. And and that was hence the reason for their decision. And and as I think was pointed out in the presentation, yes, they may say that's that is the case specific and it may not apply elsewhere, but that was their case on on shopping. The, I suppose what's interesting to me is is almost part of the consumer angle. So much of that has been that comparative shopping sites actually have substantial value to consumers in the online journey. And I'll come to the comment that that this is not a function or feature of South African market. But bear with me for a moment, that proper comparison shopping sites serve a useful function because they provide consumers with a vast, hopefully a vast range of of options and helps them find the cheapest. Because otherwise, consumers may end up at the largest retailer and make a purchase. And hence, they were popular in Europe for that reason. I think. So let me pause there and just and just allow you to comment. I mean, are these not potentially of of, I would say, huge value to consumers where they have emerged?
Sorry, could could I ask you to just restate the specific question you wanted answered? Because I think we really in this we're very happy to come and talk to you about the shopping decision, but I think it's very difficult and the current time for us to talk about it in this forum. Although I'm not sure the summary on the algorithm point was quite. We've we've responded on this in writing, so we don't need to go into that now. But if I could ask you, what's the specific question you wanted us to answer on?
Well, it was just a question, I mean, do you do comparison shopping sites or price comparison websites, as it was known, not serve a useful consumer benefit in the sense of informing consumers of the different prices that are available across various retailers and merchants? Whereas lazy consumers might otherwise, absent their their presence, might just end up on on a big e-commerce online retailer and and limit their search to that. So do you think they at least have some benefit?
If I could add one point to the the characterization of the allegedly abusive conduct in the EC case. I think it's important to point out that the the commissions did not actually make any allegation that Google was its algorithm was in any way problematic. And I think that's in the public domain, you can see from the European Commission fact sheet they they released. It says that the commission decision does not object to the design of Google's generic search algorithms or to demotions as such. So I think it is important not to think of demotions as an abusive thing that Google did. That's not what the EC says. And in fact, Google did not need to make any changes to generic search algorithm in order to remedy the abusive conduct in the decision.
No, I accept if I'm wrong on that, then then so be it. We can go back and and assess. I don't know if there's an answer to my my question.
Sure, I can I can comment a little bit about about the price comparison services. I mean, certainly, they they are useful. They're a varying quality, so I think we'll get I'll take that as a given. I think the point to make here is though that when when a user comes to Google looking for a query about for a specific product, they they want to find a place where they can buy that product directly. So the fact that they're searching on Google and providing us with the query gives us some context to help return the best and most specific results. And they may not be doing the same kind of shopping journey that they may on a price comparison service, whether it's a third-party comparison service or something like Google Shopping.
Yeah, I think, look, I think obviously we've got a direct to Google Shopping. But I mean, this is one of the fundamental questions that 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 we also need to ask is I may have started on my journey on Google Google Search. I may well be looking for a comparison site and I'm presented with your comparison site. And that's fundamentally part of the complaint. And if the relevant result said, hey, you're looking at shopping, maybe you want to look at a comparator site because that is useful to you, then consumers may take that option. But if not presented with that option, they may not. So so I think it's I don't think it's a fair statement to say that just because I started on Google Search, I have no interest in in a price comparison website unless that site has got sufficient brand awareness for me that I'm going there directly. You know, that may not be the case, but the way you build that brand awareness is, of course, advertising on Google and other means.
This is, so I guess a couple of points. One, I want to reiterate that the shopping unit itself isn't a price comparison service. So I think that's an important point, again, both in the context of the EC case and and generally that as the shopping ads at the top of Google Search. Also, you know, certainly, price comparison websites can participate in text ads and and would be responsive to, you know, more higher funnel shopping intent queries. And I think I also mentioned earlier, obviously, that that the same is true for organic results. If their websites are, you know, if they're relevant and discoverable, they can show there. So there there are many opportunities for them to have their websites discovered on google.com.
I I look, I think it's interesting you say the shopping unit isn't a comparative shopping and maybe maybe that is the case, maybe it's not. People are presented with a number of alternatives along the carousel. But but I think what, you know, just looking at at some of the findings in the EU, at least on that unit compared to actual comparative shopping sites. A report by Grant Thornton indicated that that the prices reflected on that are not necessarily the cheapest. So and and that makes sense because they're ads effectively. So so the Grant Thornton report comparing your Google Shopping Unit across to actual comparative shopping sites across a number of countries in the European Union, 12 countries, found that, on average, the prices were 13 plus percent higher compared to the the comparative shopping sites. And the median was about 7%. This varied by different categories. But it's, I suppose it makes some sense if if this is ads and the comparative shopping sites are not predominantly ads. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
I I'm not familiar with the enough with the details of the of the Grant Thornton study. So I'd rather, you know, look, look at that and then we happily follow up offline.
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, the proposition is simple and I would say intuitive. That if that unit that appears and the carousel is ad-based, it's it's not just relevance or who is cheapest that has appeared, it's who's got a shopping campaign. And so it's not necessarily going to deliver the the cheapest prices to consumers. And and I suppose that's the the simple proposition. All right. I mean, maybe just to move to to your point about South African, it's where it is in there, I suppose, the cycle. You you've made the point in your presentation that you think because we were a latecomer, we've almost skipped this this journey that others in Europe went down, which is on price comparator websites. And I just want to to just test that with you. I mean, we we probably are a little behind in that online journey compared to many other countries. But that also means that Google Shopping came earlier in in our online growth than it probably did in in Europe as well. So we do have a price comparator website. I think we put to Google that that they have certainly. Well, they've seen a big drop in their business since the arrival of Google Shopping. And I'm sure we can discuss whether, you know, what the the reasons may be for that. And we, that can be done confidentially. But but I just want to put to you, I mean, comparative shopping sites have a value. Google Shopping is a comparative shopping site, the property rather than the unit, if we have to to go there. There has been huge uptake of Google Shopping in in South Africa. A lot of advertisers have shifted to that unit. Now, maybe that's on the unit rather than the property itself. But it shows that there is an appetite amongst consumers to search online. And and so I think rather our, maybe the proposition is rather than saying somehow we've skipped a beat that that others, we have been late, but maybe Google Shopping has come a lot earlier and that has. Google Shopping has come a lot earlier and that has, in a sense, affected the growth of potential comparison shopping websites in, in South Africa. Maybe if you can respond to that.
Well, maybe, I don't know if somebody wants to respond on the market specifics, but maybe just to clarify the point we were making in the presentation was more about, the, the E C remedy and that it's targeted. It was designed and targeted in a world where there were a lot of price comparison websites. And thus the factual context in which that remedy was designed is different to the factual context that, that is, you know, on the ground in South Africa, we think. I don't know if anybody wants to comment more generally on the, on the sort of not shopping bit of that.
It's also probably worth noting that Google Shopping did arrive much later in South Africa than it did in other, other countries. So Product Universals in the UK were around as early as 2008. Google Shopping, I think, was 2013 in most E C EU countries. So 2017 in South Africa is, is quite a lot later than, than other countries where Google Shopping has been launched.
Yeah, and, and as I said, we're also a fair bit behind as well in terms of online shopping. And it's really COVID that has seen that significant boost, although probably that is true globally. Maybe one, one last. I don't think we've got time to talk to the remedy, but maybe just suffice to say that I think there is generally from the comparative shopping sites in Europe discontent that this remedy has had any effect. And, and in essence, have argued that, that they've got to now bid against Google just to appear in, in Google's box and that makes it far more difficult. I, I just got one, one small thing and it, it almost picks up from, from a discussion we had yesterday around editorial content on Play Store. But there's a lot that's presumably automated in Google. And, and one thing we are seeing is that, that, you know, you may be suspended from shopping for violating certain terms and conditions that, that, that Google has. And some of them may be there for, for good reason. But I just wanted to understand, you know, obviously if Google Shopping is important as a property or as a unit, then, then not being visible on even Google Shopping will impact. I mean, it must impact on, on firm sales unless they, they don't really get any clicks through that system anyway. But I just wanted to understand the process because it seems an automated process for suspension and it seems few of those suspended make it back on. And I just wanted to find out whether this is a human process at all or is this an automated process? And I think the other complaint is the vagueness of which the reasons are presented, that people find it difficult to determine what they've done wrong, to correct it and to, to end that suspension. But it is, at least for smaller retailers, a considerable element. Because maybe they have violated the rules, but they, they're unable to know what they must do to correct it unless there is a greater degree of human interaction. So, so maybe it's my last question for shopping unit is just, can you enlighten us as to, to that process? Whether there is any human element and human in South Africa?
Sure. Yes, we do have an entire, you know, infrastructure, trust and safety infrastructure that is involved in our policy investigation and on enforcement matters on the shopping side. So, so to answer the question, yes, there is. I don't know whether they're located in South Africa or not. Certainly I can, I can check and we can provide that information to you. I think one point just to make on, on your comments is that I think most of the suspension events in the list that we provided to the commission relate to accounts that didn't receive any clicks over the prior 90 days or so, suggesting that they weren't actively used in the first instance.
And, and what do you call that if it's not, there's no clicks or active use? What's your rip? How, how is it presented as a, a reason?
I'd have to look at the individual cases as to see what, what the reason were that they were suspended for. But the general intent of suspending accounts like that, that weren't, that weren't used is either because there are, they are misleading, they're trying to upload inappropriate content or they appear to be engaged in things like misrepresentation or have unsafe website domains or are selling counterfeit goods.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you. In the time we've got left, I just want to cover some topics in, in travel. I mean, as I think we've already discussed, travel is probably a, a big vertical for Google. And, and as we've already discussed, I think at the start of this funnel, it's, it's part of the journey. We can debate how important part of the journey, but certainly it's a high proportion. The journey starts on, on search. I suppose on travel, you know, in 2016, you, you launched the travel property on Google. And I just wanted to explore with you, I suppose, the incentives here. Because, I mean, it, it is argued, at least in the shopping case, and I think more broadly, that vertical search is a potential opportunity, but also threat to Google. And maybe increasingly in the mobile age, if I'm going to my app on my phone, I'm bypassing Google entirely. Not even Playa gets a head in there. But, but the more that that may happen, the more search revenues are eroded from, from Google. It's an opportunity because obviously there are many people who advertise on those. So whereas I said, some of the big travel companies spend heavily on marketing, they also generate revenues from, I mean, some of them are M S Es such as the, the travel vertical on Google. So clearly they're making more money from selling to whoever than they're, they're even paying to get that position. But it would appear that there is a strong incentive for Google to control the space and obviously not see that their revenue gets eroded and maybe draw in more revenue than they might otherwise. And that's an incentive to move down the funnel from the top position on search down into the meta-search or specialist search area. I don't know if you want to comment on that?
So I'm not sure if there was a specific question, but I wanted to clarify a few points to start off with. First, you know, travel is a multi-piece group of products. And, you know, Google Flights launched in South Africa at the end of 2018. Google Hotels has sort of taken many forms, but in its current form, I believe was at the end of 2015 in South Africa. And some of our, we have a couple of other products that are even more recent than that globally, not just in South Africa. And for the most part, those products are fully unpaid. Hotels is the only place where we even have advertising. So I also want to distinguish that, you know, while we also have a number of partners that we work with on the organic and content side, there are also advertisers. A lot of that advertising money is through text ads. It's unrelated to the Google Travel properties. And then if there's a specific question that you, that you wanted me to address with your statement there, I'm happy to, to discuss that further.
And I appreciate that, that for flights, for instance, currently you're not charging. But I mean, we've got to look at the, the long game, I suppose. You know, as we started out, there was an ad on the right-hand side on Google's search page and now look at what we, we have in terms of, of search. So if we have to look at the long game, I mean, Google may well have an incentive to precisely monetize these and monetize in different ways. So even on hotels, as I said, there may be two ads now at the top when you click through. Maybe in five years' time, that'll be four or five ads. It'll start to look like the, the main Google search page. So, so the static here and now doesn't define, I suppose, the longer-term strategy. You know, some might say even offering some of the free links in something like shopping may allow you to build a bigger repertoire of information and data in order to launch something more substantive in the future. So all I'm putting to you is, is that in these big verticals where others are active and are offering, consumers currently a meta-search engine product, and let's just stick with that, we don't have to go into the OTAs that they have curated over time, that is revenue that Google can target with their own meta-search engine, which, which is indicated is the travel product.
On the hotel side at least, where we do earn revenue. You know, Google has really made a push over the last several years to open that product up to essentially all comers. For a time, we were not able to support meta-searches participating in hotel ads or free booking links due to technical limitations, truthfully. And we have since opened it up such that, you know, any industry participant that can sell a hotel room in a particular hotel and that can meet our price accuracy and landing page requirements, such that we are presenting our users with useful, safe experiences, can participate in Google properties. And so, you know, we recognize that we have a, a relationship with businesses that, you know, may also compete with Google. And we, you know, made that decision essentially to strengthen the travel ecosystem as a whole. Because, you know, in our opinion, what's best for users is best for the travel ecosystem as well. So the ability to provide users with more information, more choices, more booking options also opens up that, that platform to, you know, smaller hotels, regional OTAs, regional meta-searches, you know, that may not have been able to participate previously.
But one point, I think you, you made a good point that it is possible to just get an app for TripAdvisor or any of these, or many other kind of aggregators and, and online travel agents. And that does involve bypassing Google. And I think that does create a pro, the impetus on the part of Google to make sure that the search results it's giving, if you do start your search query on Google, are very useful and relevant because it's competing for those users. It wants Google to use, like any company, it wants users to use its product and not a competing product. And I think related to that, you, the, the point about you, the, the idea that at the ads can be kind of expanded to, to increase revenue. And this isn't necessarily just a travel point, this is a more general point about search advertising. There are studies that, that are, that are public, I think we can provide to you that show that if ad load is expanded, it might give rise to a very short-term profit increase. But because the, the, the quality of the marginal ad is lower than the quality of the average ad, you're reducing potentially the kind of quality of ads in general. And that actually trains users not to click on the ads. And there's quite strong evidence suggests that if you expand ad load in that way, the long, if you take the long-term view, this is a very bad thing to do as a business because you will train users to skip the ads that aren't relevant. And the last thing Google wants to do is to kind of train users not to click on, click on ads. So that's why Google has very, long, takes a very long-term view, has very strict kind of quality thresholds. I think the assumption should be that that will continue to apply also for, as much for kind of individual specialized search experiences like hotels as it does for, for ads that appear on the general search results page.
And I think the, I mean, to be honest, the evidence is that threshold is fairly high. I mean, we, we, we obviously traversed at the beginning that eight out of the 18 slots on the general search pleasure could be ads. I think in travel in particular, my understanding from CMA studies, when they looked into, to the travel aggregators, anything from three to five out of the top 10 results were, were ads. So clearly the thresholds, they may exist, but they're not, they're not two ads in, in Google Hotels. They're, they're substantially more.
One, one point I would note is that the CMA study found that Google had fewer, a lower percentage of its search results pages compared to Bing had ads. And the average number of ads on a page that showed ads was lower for Google than Bing. So I think it's fair to say that Google has a higher threshold in terms of what it's willing, when it's willing to show an ad, a kind of higher kind of hurdle that the relevance has to, has to beat than Bing does.
And, and Bing is, is probably, you know, not many, much relevance in South Africa. But I, I'm just looking at the, the travel vertical. And all I'm saying is in travel verticals, what we see is that a high proportion are ads. So this is a high threshold for, for, for consumers. I mean, I suppose the, the question that many are asking is, I mean, is this not deja vu, shopping 2.0 in terms of, you know, in comes the travel, it's a big vertical. It gets a good placement on the search page and, and starts to draw the ads from other meta, meta-search engines because it's got a prominent position. Obviously, the OTAs, the online travel agencies, you know, can't not be on that and, and do a search in, in South Africa and you will see those big OTAs there. So it appears to be drawing revenue away or at least drawing eyeballs away. And that may in time be converted to revenues away from the next, one of the next layers in the funnel, which is your, your meta-search engines, which in some respects have a little degree of similarity to comparator shopping sites in the sense that you're not booking or buying, you're being offered with choice. And that's the value that they're bringing to, to the consumer. So, I mean, why would one not see this as a, a similar sort of turning point?
Well, there's a few differences between shopping and travel. And again, travel is sort of individual pieces, so I'll try to take that, I'll, I'll discuss flights and hotels slightly separately. You know, as, as Adam explained, the shopping unit is an ad. It resides in the ad space and advertisers buy ads in that unit that go directly to their websites. The travel units are organic. In the flights case, if a user searches for, you know, flights from an origin to a destination, the flights unit is simply a piece of information saying this is all of the flights, the actual airlines that will take you from A to Z, that will do that route on your selected dates. Now, there are many other options for the user to say, actually, I would rather go to Skyscanner. I would rather go to Kayak, I'd rather complete my search on another meta-search or OTA. But if the user does choose to click into Google Flights, then again, we partner with, you know, more than 300 airlines and OTAs to surface their direct booking links and send them free and highly qualified traffic to their booking sites. Hotels are the same, it's an organic list of the top four hotels that the Google, that Google believes are most responsive to the user's query if they search for hotels in a particular destination or, you know, child-friendly hotels or romantic hotels or whatever it might be. The search results page offers both, as you mentioned, you know, paid ads that might appear at the top and then a number of other links to other places to go and complete that hotel search. And if the user clicks into the hotel's property, they still have multiple opportunities to engage with those other travel providers, if that's where they prefer to book their travel. They also have the benefit of seeing the prices that are offered by all of those different sites, including other meta-search engines. So they might see a price from Trivago or TripAdvisor alongside booking.com Expedia or the hotel itself.
And, and I suppose that is obviously what a meta-search engine does. So if you are on Trivago or Kayak, as you say, that's, that's what you're going there to find. The same as Google. So, I mean, it's a similar, I suppose, value proposition, your meta-search engine. The, I suppose the question really for me is, I mean, is it a substantial consumer ad? Because, I mean, would the consumer be better off heading to a Trivago or Kayak? And I'm not trying to punt one or two, but they are alternative. they are alternatives. But the way that Google Travel appears is, I mean, my experience has been always on the top of the organic. So I know you say it's an organic search, but I've never seen it slip down, and that may be my limitation in search. But but it appears there. I'm not told this is a a kind of meta search engine. It's not got an like an ad if Kayak or Trivago was above that. And I'm taking into experience of Google, but who's to say that Google Travel is a better product than than one of the others? That warrants that better placement?
Again, the unit is ranked by our search algorithms that take into account all sorts of different signals and compare different websites and other different, you know, pieces of organic content that we place on the search results page. And, you know, we we hope that users think that our that our search product is is the most useful to find, to help them find a hotel. But, you know, if they if they don't think so, then they have many other options to go either to the Blue Links or even once they get to the into the Google Hotels property. There are many links off to explore, you know, either the hotel website itself or to go and and book or explore further hotels with another party.
I mean, as you say, it may not be the best. You hope it is useful to the consumers, but I think that's the, that may be the the concern from a consumer perspective. I mean, I'm interested when you say that it's handled by your normal organic search, because obviously it's quite different to any other text ad because it's got pictures, it's got, you know, visual content as well. So do those factors factor into the algorithm? Because that's an improved quality of ad?
So again, it's not an ad. But I'll maybe I'll toss it over to explain a little bit, perhaps if we can, about sort of how that search algorithm deals with different pieces of content. Because, you know, as you know, if we, if you search for a movie title, for example, you might see a combination of Blue Links or movie times or or information in other formats as well.
So as Abby was mentioning, this is right. This is, you know, one of the one of the more complicated things that we have to do as we're ranking content on the on the search results pages, figure out how a a travel unit or a hotel unit should rank against ten Blue Links or other information that that might show up on the page. One point I want to make is is we we do run studies fairly regularly where we effectively ablate certain quality signals for a for a small portion of users to see how users will react if we effectively show what we consider to be less relevant or less useful information higher on the page. And what we see time and time again is that as we surface less, lower quality content higher up on the page, users go down. They they look for more, look for the higher quality content, and they don't specifically just stop at the top.
But in terms of the specific question, I mean, the fact that this result is rendered with lots of visual content and and also when it is rendered, takes up a fair amount of space. And because you're listing, let's say, a few hotels or a list of flights, I mean, do those factors resonate with some of the basic search algorithm for organic results or not?
I I think the answer there is yes. You know, the more information we have about a result, the more pictures we have, the more information we have about your ability to buy, whatever the price might be, that that will result in your, in that result surfacing higher. And if we have that information in a travel unit and hotel using it, it will likely result in that surfacing higher because it's it's going to be more useful and relevant to the user after looking for that information.
And I I would imagine that and probably has higher conversion rates, which probably also feeds into the algorithm because clearly when you do render it as an ad, if people have clicked on it, then it's seen as useful. But I suppose the one difference apart from the fact that it seems to have a natural advantage is is obviously that it's the only one displayed in that. So so the fact that Trivago or Kayak has is not rendered in that way, it is pushed down the research, search results. And so the general algorithm must provide, or I think, as you pointed out, does provide an advantage to it. So just the way it's rendered to the user gives it an advantage. And that's probably explains why, in my experience, it's always been the first ad after after the, sorry, first organic result. Thank you. I saw you flinch there. But after the ads. And is that not fair?
So so one bit that I'll note is just that if we saw users moving past a hotels unit or a flights unit to go to Trivago, to go to Expedia, to go to another OTA, that would eventually get get baked into the algorithm as as we understand that those are the results that users want to find. And so I think the the presence of additional information around a result, you know, in terms of a picture, in terms of price, is certainly useful. And will help the user, you know, make the decision that this is what they they want, essentially what they want to purchase or where they want to go. But that is not specifically determinative of of where the unit will rank. It really, it really does come down to kind of what user behavior shows us.
And users are like pictures. That that we know.
Can I just make one other? Which is that, you know, the hotels that Google displays in the hotels unit, you know, those are not, they're not presented there by partners per se, but you know, the hotels themselves often are small businesses. And as we mentioned, you know, by claiming your business on Google My Business, the business owner has an opportunity to improve the listing, to you know, add photos, make sure all their information is up to date and better listings are ranked higher. And that, you know, gives that hotel an opportunity to show up, you know, to to users in a way that it might not otherwise based on its own website.
And I think that's, you know, obviously a fair comment. Obviously, there's ads that start that journey at the top of the page. But I suppose other MSCs will have the same criteria, or they may differ to Google, but, you know, they will also have on their search rankings, determine where people lie based on what information they provided, the quality of photos. I think we hear that quite commonly. I mean, I suppose the the one concern is that this is, as I said, deja vu. You know, comparative shopping sites, take two, travel industry beware. And I think what we have seen is that almost all your big global travel companies have put in their SEC filings that this represents a risk to their business. So certainly they see it as as a risk. You may disagree, but they certainly see it as a risk. I think for some of the some of the South African platforms, as we've heard today, even is the other risk, even if I'm not big enough to be bidding into the AdWords or I'm not a big platform, is it pushes organic search even further down. So even if it had half a chance of getting above the fold, it's now probably scroll three. And that, in the battle between big meta search engines, is is maybe potentially a casualty for some of the smaller platforms in a country like our own. I don't know if you want to comment on that.
I wonder if one of my South African colleagues might be better suited to comment on the South African market as I'm not as familiar.
Well, I think it's not a South African specific thing. I mean, factually, if that advert is rendered. So I think we got feedback. Thank you. If that travel product is rendered at the top of there after the adverts because of its various features, it's a big property because you're listing a number of hotels with pictures and it's in a vertical space, certainly on a mobile phone, which means naturally, I mean, it's a natural consequence that the first organic result must be further down the scroll. I mean, would you not accept that? It's a just a natural consequence.
In cases where the hotels unit is is ranked at the top, that would be a natural consequence.
And and if consumers were less or less often going to scroll down, as we we sort of discussed earlier, then then it may be that organic search impressions, because whether they even seen or not, as I understand, is the impression and potentially the click through may be may be affected. Is that not a natural consequence too?
I think you're raising quite a broad suite of points, to be honest, that are quite hard to give a one-line answer to. I'm I'm not sure your jumping off point, that, you know, shopping and travel units, that the shopping unit is the same as the travel and the, sorry, the hotels and flights. Sorry. I'm not sure we would agree with your jumping off point, that travel and flights is equivalent to the shopping unit that's been looked at in previous cases. So I mean, I think if this is a point you want to explore, it's a it's a bigger discussion that I think we can do in a two-line answer.
Yeah, we may well disagree. As I said, I think it seems that 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 certainly those that have been historically reliant on Google to draw customers to their sites and platforms, they seem tend to be in agreement that this represents a threat to them.
That that's a different point with respect.
Yeah, whether they are, whether they are right or not, we will see.
I I think it's important to distinguish between South African businesses who who maybe hotels, who as a result of the unit are, which is, as we say, is organic. So it's it is quite different to the to the shopping unit, are potentially getting free clicks because essentially the user clicks on the on the hotels unit, that takes them to the hotels page. And I think you can calculate from data that we provided that a very small minority of clicks from the hotels page are actually ads and the and the vast majority are free. So the result of the of the hotels unit showing is that potentially small businesses, South Africa, in South Africa, small, small hotels are going to get more free traffic as a result of the unit. So I think that's an important consideration. And the other thing I'd like to say about, you know, making comparisons to cases, I think, I think it is quite difficult to draw comparisons across cases. And we've also had the Street Map case in the UK, which was a High Court case, where the allegation was that by showing a map, Google was foreclosing competition from other map providers. And the the judge in that case said that that's a, that didn't have an appreciable appreciable anti-competitive effect. And even if even if it did, which was a kind of even if type argument, he said that it was objectively justified and there wasn't really a better way of of responding to 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 search queries looking for local geographic information. So I think it's, you could equally say, well, why isn't it like that case? You know, and that's a case where the the judge found Google's